Hey Jim.
Hey Mike.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. What episode?
Uh, episode twenty-six.
Six, twenty-six.
We skipped last week.
Yeah, Saquon Barkley edition.
Really?
He's number twenty-six.
Ah, okay.
You like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, maybe.
Anyhow, look, we got a guest today.
We do? Oh, here she is.
Guest number?
Three.
Three?
Is that right? Let me, let me check the, uh, log here. Yes, that would be guest number three.
How about any, any updated Instagram followers?
Oh, Instagram. Uh, yeah, we're really picking it up here. Two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand.
Oh, over the two-hundred-thousand mark.
Over the quarter million, over the quarter million mark.
Alright, so listen, uh, we have a guest.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's our first, I would say, maybe, uh...
Public figure?
Oh, maybe.
Is that a right way to refer to it?
I guess so.
Okay.
Uh...
Not just someone off the street?
We have, not just somebody off the street. This is a candidate.
Ooh.
For school board.
School board.
In Central Bucks.
Ooh, and that's where you, that, that's where we're from.
Yes.
That's where our studio is from, not Los Angeles. We're from... Where do you live? Warwick? Jamison, I'm sorry.
Jamison, yeah, yeah.
We drink in Warwick, we live in Jamison.
Yeah, we drink in Warwick, we live in Jamison. Anyhow, so, uh, wanna introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone, yeah. My name's Amanda O'Connor. I'm a Jamison resident and I'm running for school board in Region Two of Central Bucks.
Alright.
Region Two, cool.
And, uh, out of respect for Amanda, who doesn't drink beer.
Okay.
I thought for today's podcast, we would drink a non-alcohol, alcoholic beer.
Beer, okay.
Uh, I gotta be honest with you, I've never had a non-alcoholic beer.
Uh, once, I think I did, and I don't really know why.
Well, back in the day, all there was was O'Doole's.
O'Doole's.
But now there's a plethora.
A plethora, oh, okay.
That's an S-A-T word.
Plethora.
Um, anyhow, um, I've, I'm, I'm very curious to try this. This is Guinness's Zero Alcohol Beer.
Yeah, 'cause didn't they, remember that one, we're at the, uh, Link City? And they had like that double?
Yeah, they had like a black one.
Woo.
Well, anyhow.
But this is the opposite one.
I've never had a non-alcoholic beer, I'd like to give it a shot.
They taste rather well, the ones I've had.
Yeah?
Yeah, I don't know why I drank one, but.
I'm not really sure.
Why? Alcohol beer.
But, uh, let's give it a shot.
Okay.
I'm really honored that you're doing this.
Oh, of course.
We're doing it for you.
I know, I know.
Well, not really, ooh, whoa, whoa!
Whoa!
We'll break it up?
It's exciting to be on the show too.
Oh, you know why? 'Cause they have that thing, the, the chemical reaction, right?
They do, actually, you're supposed to pour this in a nice, uh...
Clip, sorry, I'll give you that place, I suck the foam off.
What are you doing?
For Amanda.
No, Amanda's not having it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She'll drink beer, yeah.
Oh, alright, well, this isn't real beer.
That is true, but...
Okay, sorry, okay.
Let's give it a shot.
Alright. I don't know, a little more bitter than regular.
A little bit.
I don't know, tastes like the, uh, um, the rib. The rib beer, yeah, the smoky rib.
Smoky rib on the, uh, Smokehouse Lodge from Warwick.
Tasting like...
This isn't bad, I mean...
It's alright, yeah.
I guess I'm allowed to have multiple of these today.
Fire them down all day, I guess, yeah, zero.
And just to let you guys know, Guinness, um, it does say twenty-one years old in this.
I guess, yeah, I guess so, Puerto Rico.
Those people who don't drink Guinness, it's traditionally a regular Guinness, only four-point-five percent alcohol.
Right, we thought it was higher.
At about a hundred-and-fifty calories, so it's, it's not what you think.
Right, it's not, I just...
Oh!
High octane.
The lady had Wegmans today when I bought it, she was like, "Oh, I've never had a Guinness before, I heard it's pretty heavy."
Nah, it's not.
And I said, "This is zero alcohol."
Zero, like, zero, yeah.
Yeah, my husband's a Guinness lover.
Gingers.
And he, um, it's the same thing, he's always like, it goes down smooth, it's very light, and you don't feel like heavy and bloated or anything.
No, it's just scary when you look at it.
You don't...
Both of us, you guys know this, thirty-six-year teacher.
Twenty-eight.
And, um, we, we value education, we value school boards. They're the most important part of the school district.
Yeah.
Uh, I think people forget that, that your school board...
Sets the direction, right?
Of the, of the district.
Yeah.
And, uh, sometimes they're forgotten.
Yeah.
Uh, sometimes, I don't know, in, in off-elections.
Yeah.
People don't, um...
People don't, I don't know why they don't vote.
Don't take the time.
I vote all the time.
I vote all the time.
All the time.
Hey, real quick, before we do that, that's just, I know next week, uh, May fifth is the last time to register to vote in Pennsylvania.
That's correct, that's a Monday.
And you have a...
Last, uh, mail-in application, uh, May thirteenth, that's Tuesday.
Okay.
And then election day's May twentieth.
Yeah, May twentieth this year, it's a primary.
Right.
Uh, and I think Amanda is gonna be on the ballot.
I am, yeah.
Okay, so, let's take the time, get out there and vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I also add to your PSA that mail-in ballots have already gone out?
Yes.
So some people started to receive their mail-in ballots in the mail, and we are strongly recommending that if you're doing a mail-in ballot, try to mail it in by the tenth. So you have that ten days for the post office to get it in.
You don't wanna...
Or drop it off at one of the designated boxes. I know there's one right at Doylestown Courthouse, and one at the Warminster Library, so you can drop it off at those boxes as well.
Alright.
I did get my email telling me my ballot is being prepared right now.
Alright, good.
And if you don't get it in seven days, call us, which is great.
Call you?
No, call them, like, if I don't get it, call us here at, at the thing. And I've done mail-in before, I'm a big mail-in guy.
Jim's got a little side hustle going.
Uh, call Richards, he's not doing anything. Oh, right, I can round up ballots.
I don't know, that's called, is that?
I know.
Yeah, no, we can't do that.
Can't do that.
I did it by accident once, did I tell that story?
No.
When people thought I worked there, and they kept handing me the ballots, and I'm like, I, I can't do this. Like, people didn't wanna get out of the carts, I hear it, put it in, I go, "I'm not allowed."
Yeah.
They're like, "Well, you work here," I go, "No, I don't work here." I was helping older people who were like a hundred get to the ballot box, you know what I mean?
Well, we need helpers like that, but you actually need to physically put your own.
And have shirts.
You can't deliver your spouses, you can't do anything.
Really?
No, you have to deliver your own.
Wow!
I didn't know that.
Yep.
Okay.
What if they threw it in the mailbox, at the, at the post office?
Um...
They want to know. You can check the camera, I guess.
I'm not advised on that, so I'm not giving any recommendations for that, but...
With the drop boxes, remember, they had their problems before, so I just dropped mine right at the post office, take it right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Right there, put, and I walk inside.
I think I...
Just, I don't know, I'm thinking about the post office.
I went to the courthouse and dropped off.
My sister loves going up there, yeah, seeing people, yeah.
It's like an event.
It's a, right, it's an event.
Turn it into a party.
Oh, correct.
Yeah.
Alright, let's get started with this.
Sure.
Um, I prepared a few questions, I knew Jim prepared a few questions.
Two.
I don't know if you wanna start with a statement, maybe talk about yourself a little bit, give the viewers at home...
A little taste of what you're...
What, who you are, what you're all about.
Sure, so I feel a little intimidated right now, sitting around sixty years of teaching professionals. Um, so I taught for eleven years, so I didn't make it to the sixty, well, not together, sixty-year mark.
Over a hundred. No, ninety-seven.
But I taught for eleven years in two different school districts in Pennsylvania, I was in the Trichester School District for five years, and then in Kennett Square for six years.
Cool.
Um, so, I left when I had children, and we actually moved out of the state, and then moving back here, I have started my own business, so I'm now a business owner in the community. And I work with a lot of small businesses here in Central Bucks. But, some more of my background, I have a master's degree from Delval in educational leadership, and I do have my certificate to be a principal. So I went through all the leadership training courses as well, and I've always been a huge supporter of public education. I, my success in life has been because of public education, my husband as well, and so we've been huge supporters of public education. Uh, we have two children, they are currently at Jamison Elementary School, one's in third grade, one is in first grade, and we're super busy parents, carting them all over the place between baseball, sewing, acting class, my son's in chess club at Jamison. Today, they're gonna run the color run at Jamison, so super busy there, um, and that's a little bit about my background. Um, do you want me to go right into why I'm running?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I, I was gonna interject though, real quick, my children went through Jamison Elementary School. We loved it, great experience, what a great faculty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, always, always supportive of our kids, um, shout out to Ms. Lukel. Uh, Ms. Lukel, uh, she's retired now, but both Patrick and Holly and Ms. Lukel loved her.
What grade? Was that high school?
I think fourth grade, no, fourth grade, at Jamison.
Oh, I don't know, you said they had someone they really liked in high school.
But I just love the fact that Jamison is a part of the community, and they do these great after-school, um, the color run, one of the most cool things.
Yeah, this Jamison Joggers program that they have is really cool, and it's a great way too, to like, get the kids physically active and doing something, especially during the springtime when the weather's beautiful. Um, my kids have had the best experience at Jamison. They go into that school every morning, like, skipping and so excited, like, they can't get away from us fast enough, which I, hopefully that doesn't reflect on us. But they're just so excited to go to school, they love their teachers, they love so many elements of the school, and then also, now that they're getting older and can do activities, my son plays baseball with pretty much his entire class.
That's right.
So that's also really nice for the community building and getting to know the parents in the other classrooms, um, and things like that. Um, yeah.
So, yeah, I just wanted to say that, so, yeah, why, why don't you hit us up with, why are you running for school board?
Sure, so I am running for school board because I felt compelled to get involved in the community in a real tangible way. I, um, just always watched, watched school boards, when I was a teacher, I attended so many school board meetings, actually, when I was in high school, I was part of the policy committee.
Okay.
So I had to, I would sit with school board members monthly, we would discuss policies, and then have to go to the school board in case any questions were asked, and to speak sometimes. So going to school board meetings is something that I've been familiar with, and understanding what the board does.
Wow.
But in the last couple of years, with the current climate of our community and our country, I felt like this was something that I could do to make a positive impact. Um, I share, and this is not a secret, I was a registered independent until March. I always felt, well, one, I registered as an independent because with your voting records being public, I never wanted my students to be able to look up what party I was affiliated with. I wanted them to see, "Oh, she's an independent," because what I was teaching them was history, events that happened, and critical thinking skills. So that they could think for themselves and come up with their own opinions when it came time to voting for their elected officials. Um, but, in order to run, I have to be a part of a party, and the Democratic platform right now is more of a party that I align with. I want to create and help create the culture of safe schools, academic achievement, having our teachers be supported, our classrooms have the resources that they need, and our schools to be safe. And those are the things that I really stand for.
Right?
Nice, nice.
That's a big one.
Yeah, you know, as a, as an educator and also as a parent.
Parent, yeah.
I think, and this is getting personal opinion, that school board members should come from that parent pool who have a vested interest...
Interest, yeah.
In what's going on in their schools. Uh, I know sometimes, uh, there could be school board members that their interest isn't maybe the best for students or children.
Families.
That's the way I've looked at it, but, you know, I, I like the fact that you're coming from that background of not only a teacher, but as a parent, with kids that are involved, so you have a vested interest. It's nice.
Yeah, and I think too, with, you know, having people that are in my stage of life on the board, it brings that perspective that is different from other people who may be retired, and bring a different perspective to the board, and then what we need is for all of us to collaborate together. Because there are a large part of the population here who are retired, there's people that are in my situation, there are single parents or all of us, and we have that, if we have that representation on the board, then we make decisions that best represent our community, and not just from one opinion and one side with that.
One interest, yeah.
So, I, I just, I wanted to touch base, so it's funny, you said something about the, uh, when you were in high school, you were on the...
Really, that's impressive.
Our high school had something similar, and, uh, I know the biggest issue of high school students, I don't know, do, do, could you think back, maybe what you were interested in? I was like Truman, the kids would always say to me, "Why don't we have better school lunches?"
Lunches.
That was always...
Well, I would say...
Go to a school board meeting.
Yes.
Speak up and talk about school lunches, that was always like...
That's it?
I don't know if you remember back then, but maybe...
So I was a kid whose mom always packed my lunch.
I was too.
But...
Never really bought.
I loved the nachos at lunch, like, I was always going up.
In a bag?
No, they would give them to us in like a little plastic container with the dipping cheese.
Oh, old school.
Yeah, so that was one thing that I would always do, but no, my mom always packed my lunch. I remember a policy meeting really debating a board member on homework, because...
Oh!
Board policy, you know, they had it in their policy, the number of hours of homework we should have.
Right.
And high school was always like three hours.
That's a lot.
And I felt the same way, as a high school student, I had a job, I had a job, as soon as I turned fifteen, I worked at Southampton Estates in their dining hall. So I went right from school to work, that was about, until like seven, and then, so you then want me to do three hours of homework, I'm up till ten.
Yeah.
And that's not including spending time with my parents, maybe seeing my friends, any other thing you wanted to do, and so they had this thing where like, it was kind of a, a ranking system, elementary school was an hour, middle school was two hours, and...
And the grades, yeah, and a half hour.
Yeah.
Was it that? I've never heard something like that.
And I remember me, me and the other, uh, me and the other girl, um, 'cause we were part of student government, so that's how we got brought into the policy committee, that was one thing that we really kind of pushed back on. And especially, you know, when you have AP classes, my one, my one AP class could assign three hours of homework.
I was gonna say that, AP classes now, that's just for one class, three hours.
Exactly, and so that was one thing.
Math, you know you got math every night.
I'm really glad that we were there to bring that student perspective, 'cause if we weren't, we're gonna walk down there with nine hours of homework, right, with what the other, um, you know, members were saying, so that was one thing. Um, but I was always just, so I went, grew up in centennial schools, and when I met my husband, who's a CBEES grad, he used to tell me about all the food that they had, and they had really...
Food court.
They had like a food court.
I taught there, I taught there, I ate a hoagie every day.
Oh, my god.
I did, it was like, ooh, I'll have a hoagie again.
He was getting a pepperoni roll every day.
See?
And I'm like, "Yeah, we don't have that, we had the old school go-through with...
Try.
...go-through the cafeteria line."
Or an orange.
Yes.
Don't forget your milk.
Yeah. That's why I skipped that line and always went to the nacho.
Some do have like food courts now.
Yeah.
Like, woo!
Yeah.
Yeah, listen, that may not be the most pressing issue, but...
No.
I know, homework and lunches.
Lunches, more nutritious, yeah.
One thing as a teacher that got us really upset when those rules came in, is in the school that I worked at, they sold like the, not the big Wawa's, but like, you know the side, you go to Wawa, you get like the smaller, they're like two for three dollars.
Oh, the courts?
Yeah, whatever those...
The kids bring them in.
Yeah, exactly, they would have those in our school cafeteria, so we would...
Ice tea.
The ice tea.
The big ones.
Not the big ones, no, they're like the size of this Guinness you get, and they're at Wawa.
It's too much.
Um, well, they would sell those, and they were like a buck. So at school, I was like, "Oh, yeah, I could always get..." I'm an iced tea drinker, hence this, like, I...
Oh, you got the small.
So...
El grande.
Uh, it's a trenta.
A trenta. What is it, three, three what? Oh, three liters. Yeah, they changed them.
So they changed them, and they were still charging us a buck, but then they were like this big.
Ah!
But at Trichester, the grilled cheese and tomato soup guy.
Really?
Yeah, you are good, we still have that.
Wow, that's a good one.
I get that too in Armstrong.
I remember in Bristol Town...
But that was a bagger too, ground bagger.
Our school board had a, had signed an agreement with Pepsi.
Oh, the sell-out years.
So, we, we sold it out to Pepsi, and Pepsi promised us, I don't know what the funding was, which...
Millions of dollars, whatever.
And, um, yeah, we were bombarded with Pepsi products.
Right.
All through the school.
Right.
Except during lunch.
Interesting, okay.
Bro, except lunch.
Students could, could go to the vending machines after school.
Right.
Yeah.
So a lot of the sports teams and a lot of kids would...
Middle school would do it, and you're like, dude, you're buying eight sodas, neither of the kids will buy them.
Not during lunch though.
Not during lunch.
And then it became a game, kids would go, "Coach, coach, here's a dollar, and you get me a Pepsi."
Ooh!
We had access to the vending machine, they did have access to the vending machines during lunch.
I remember that, they got the soda, who's your sponsor?
Yeah.
And they would give you millions of dollars.
Look, I'm not sure.
I forgot about that.
I, I'm not aware of that happening...
No, they're pretty good about it, yeah.
But that was something, I guess, about ten or fifteen years ago, schools were doing.
Yeah, it was a big thing.
Let's ask some questions.
Okay, oh.
I think you talked a lot about it.
Yeah, we already touched a lot.
Real quick, I think you answered, you know, why you're running for school board and what are your qualifications, how about, what do you think the top needs of Central Bucks are?
So, I think the top needs of Central, well, it should be different at every level, so when we look at the different levels of our schools, going from the elementary, middle, and high school, I think the big thing that is going to be is this realignment that we're doing. So, um, we are starting next year, I know there's a pilot, and then it'll be full-blown the year after, a full-day kindergarten.
Okay.
Which I did not have the pleasure of having, 'cause my kids, my youngest is in first grade, but I think our community desperately needs that, I am so excited for that. But I do think a lot of resources and energy need to go through to make sure that that program is implemented properly. Um, also too, that means a realignment of our sixth graders going into the middle school for the first time, where before they've been housed in the elementary school.
They're still in elementary?
They're still in elementary, and then that means our ninth graders will move into the high school. So I think that in the next couple of years, that's gonna be the big focus of watching those adjustments being made, and then seeing, okay, those adjustments are being made, are we having any hiccups in any area? Where might we need extra support, and what does that extra support look like, and how as a board member, can I support that transition happening in an effective way? Because I do think that that realignment is a huge positive change for our district.
We just had that a couple of years ago, that's when I started teaching sixth grade, I've been there, well, I was there for twenty years, we did all of them, so we did like, I got there at seven, eight, nine, then they did six, seven, eight, then we did seventy.
Change for...
Yeah, and now we're back to six.
It's interesting how districts all over the state...
Yeah, do it different.
Do it differently, um, our district had all-day kindergarten for a long time now.
Pensbury was one of the first ones, I think, that I heard of, the full day, and only certain schools had it, I think, which is kinda odd.
And then having middle school be six, seven, eight versus...
Seven, eight, nine.
Seven, eight, nine, right, um, I don't know, I personally think it should all should be alive.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think too, when like, you know, ninth graders, even though they're in the middle school, that goes on their high school transcript.
Big, huge, huge, I taught ninth grade in middle school.
And also too, like, not all of our schools, like, where they're located-wise, like, Hollycom is in the same parking lot as East, and so I have some friends whose kids are in ninth grade, they will walk over to East for math and science.
Part of the high school.
Yes, but like, with South, there's no walkable middle school to there, so they don't get that same opportunity. Now, it doesn't mean that they're not getting those math classes or the science classes, but there's also something different when you're on the high school campus.
Oh, big time, big time.
And so I think that that adjustment is going to be something that's really great for the community, we just also need to make sure that, again, it happens smoothly.
Mm-hmm, yeah, ninth grade, that's when it gets bounced around, and sixth grade.
Ninth grade.
Yeah, ninth grade, I taught ninth grade in the middle school, and that, exactly what you said, convincing them like midterms, finals, they're like, "Well, no, it's not," I go, it's, they didn't get the credit part, they got it, but it didn't sink in, and it was like uphill battle, like, this counts, man, um, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree.
Not counts, but it's different than eighth grade, yeah, I think it should be high school.
Yeah, it's a nice thing.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, let me move on to another question.
Yeah.
Um, this is, this is a tough one.
Oh, boy.
Uh-oh.
This is Mike's, not mine.
So, what, what are your budget priorities, and do you think that taxes would need to be raised, or with what you're thinking budgetarily?
Yeah, so budgetarily...
Is that a real word?
I don't know, I say two words.
Sounded, sounding good, budgetarily, I'm speaking.
No, it's very official.
Yeah, really, oh, he really knows what he's talking about.
So, the biggest thing for me is that the resources need to be spent on our student achievement, and so that is where our resources need to go, to our student achievement, to our classroom resources, and then also to our school safety. So those are three areas where I firmly believe that, that's where our resources should go, and then if, you know, cuts need to be made or things like that, we should be able to look in other areas for that. Um, when it comes to, we have some major things that are gonna be happening in, whether it's locally or it's on a nationwide scale, because there's a lot of uncertainty going on right now. I think one of the things our community is all aware of is that some of our buildings are in need of renovation. And so taking a look at that, and then how do we do those renovations, and how does that fit in budget-wise with where we currently are? Raising taxes should be the last possible thing that we do. Our community is super supportive of our schools, and knows that having strong schools keeps our property values high, keeps this area a desirable place to live. With all of that, though, sometimes we do need to spend money on certain things, and so my goal as somebody who's running for the board is to always make sure that all avenues are looked at before we go to raising taxes. We shouldn't just immediately, we're gonna raise taxes for this, 'cause we can't do that. Our families that live here are all hard-working people who don't wanna see their taxes go up, our seniors who are here on fixed income don't wanna see their taxes...
Like us.
Don't wanna see their taxes go up, but we also, as a community, recognize that our strong schools keep our strong community.
Yeah.
And so that's one of the other things that we always need to keep in mind when we're making, when we're looking at those decisions.
Okay.
Interesting, well, uh, just to add on, I remember a parent, um, this year, I, I don't know what I was doing, it was in the parking lot, oh, I think it was the Halloween dance or something, remember our Halloween?
Yeah, yeah.
The infamous Halloween dance, so I was at the parking lot directing traffic like I always do, and the parent came up, and he's like, "Oh, this, this is like, great, man," like, kid was like, so excited about this. And I was like, "Yeah, we do it every year, like, the teachers really put in a lot of effort," I said, "This is what we're known for," he's like, "Oh, we just moved from Philly, and they really don't have the resources to do stuff like this." And it's not even the academic stuff, it's, like you said, the Halloween dance, or Black Gold Day.
Yes.
Dodgeball Day.
And as a coach, um, when, when our district put money into building our athletic facility, I was pretty proud of that.
It's nice, too.
It was nice to have other teams, and we were one of the first districts in Bucks County to have turf, and it was nice, other schools were coming to our facility saying, "Wow."
Yeah.
Because, and I, I, I think it's worth the investment, sometimes, um, what's that attitude, we robbed Peter to pay Paul or whatever, but sometimes, you know, it might have been more cost-effective to put the turf in, rather to have somebody maintain that grass, and maintain the cutting and all that stuff.
I think too, keeping in mind that our schools are used for a lot of other things besides like the school, so they can be an area where communities come together, and I, I love that about our schools, I never want our schools to be, you know, feel, I don't ever want certain populations to feel like our schools are hands-off to them. Like, our schools should be a place, I, my husband and I, when we were getting married, for Valentine's Day one year, he bought me night classes at CBEES to learn ballroom dancing.
Oh!
You know, those adult programs.
Adult programs, I read those, I'm like, hmm, maybe I need to know, maybe I need to learn, yeah, tai chi.
Making sure the community's proud of your school.
Yeah, and they're included with it, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and then, you know, one of the things, when I started the small business that I own right now, I took, I took classes from local professionals at the high school that was in our community. So all of that makes, again, that community feel invested and feel a part of the school district, and we really are a group of people that need to work together and all co-communicate, and that's what our schools should be. And so that's, you know, one of the things that I'll bring to the board is that this openness, this transparency, you know, when we have events at our schools, when we have, you know, the high schools now are putting on their musicals. when we have events at our schools, when we have, you know, the high schools now are putting on their musicals. I love when I see buses come from our senior communities who all go in, because those productions are amazing.
They're really good.
They're so good.
Yeah, they're really good.
Our district, one of, one of the things we're known for is our theater program.
Okay, yeah.
But, uh, for 20 years at our, at our school, I put on, I was involved with our holiday show. So it was a teacher production. Um, my daughter would say, Dad, it was the worst thing she ever saw.
But Mike's very proud of it.
But, but no, but we have seniors that come back, graduates.
Yes, that's what I remember.
They were, they love it. So two years ago, we were having our auditorium renovated. And, uh, the principal came to us and said, uh, this year you're not going to be able to put on the holiday. So it got back to the school board. And our school board president, he actually stopped over to see me and said, we're gonna make it happen. We're gonna put, we're gonna put a little hold on renovations.
What?
Oh.
So after your holiday show.
For your production.
There was such a hullabaloo from the students out there and the parents that they wanted, the show must go on.
It must go on.
So
It's tradition.
Our school board president was great. And he came over and said, we're gonna put pause on it until the show's over.
Yeah.
And then
I've never heard that story.
Yeah, I love to hear stuff like that because I remember when I was in high school, our, um, faculty members did the same exact thing. They would act out the night, the night before Christmas.
Ah.
On stage. And the teachers would do, and it was something like, we knew it was that last day of school. You look forward to it. Um, also being a William Tenet grad, we had black and white nights.
Yep. Black Gold Day.
Oh, my God. It was the greatest. And we all get our T-shirts and our little insiders, inside jokes put on the back of it. And all of those things matter. And so I'm really glad to hear that, you know, the school board president stood up for that because that, there would have been a class that like may thought back, they would miss that.
You're the class that missed it. Like, oh.
Right. And that's how I feel about, um, like my heartbreaks for like the kids who lost their prom during COVID. And lost their graduation.
The group that lost.
Yes.
Yeah, that was rough.
Yeah, they lost so much. And, you know, I wish that we could somehow say like, hey, if you were the class of 2020 or 2021,
Have it.
Let's go. You know, let's do something because those things, you know,
You never get them back.
No, get a gown, get a tux.
Are you got a question?
Tux from, uh, Bell Tuxedos. Let's sit in Bristol Township.
Hold that for our prom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our prom show.
Little preview.
You got a question?
Uh, uh, no, we did the requirements to be on the school board.
Oh, okay.
Right? I think you have to live in that. You, you answered that.
Yeah.
When I Googled it up. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. In the green room.
That would be the kitchen table.
AKA, the kitchen table.
Yeah, in order to run for school board, you have to live in the region that you're running in. So, um, can I say a little bit about Central Bucks? There's a change this year.
Okay, go ahead.
So in previous years, the Central Bucks School District was divided into nine regions. So they were much smaller. And so previously, region nine was Jamison and Warwick. But with the rezoning, now instead of having one board representation in each area, each area has three board members that represent them, which means that we now have three regions instead of nine. So we're having to do a little bit of education this year. Region two that I'm running in is massive. It's part of Buckingham, uh, Buckingham Precinct one. It's furlong, Warwick, Jamison, uh, three quarters of Doylestown Borough, Doylestown Township, part of New Britain. So it is really, really, it's very large. And a lot of people aren't aware, we have, as I've been knocking on doors, people are like, oh, well, I know who my school board person is already. And it's like, actually, you now have three instead of just one. Um, and this is, I think, a great move because when all nine board members have a vote on what, what impacts our students at their school, what impacts our community, we should have more people that represent us than just one.
Yeah, I was gonna say for the size of the district.
Exactly. So I'm excited about this change. I just want to make sure that people know about it.
Right. So check, read that ballot carefully.
Yes.
Thanks for that info.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hit you with the last question. Um, it's very personal to me.
Oh, boy. We don't know.
Well, you know, I, I taught ID in an LS classroom for
Can you refresh us, Mike? It's been a couple of weeks.
Intellectually disabled in the life skills classroom. So, um,
I'm glad you know that.
I'll address, and this is a hot topic too. It's the needs of all students. And I'm talking across the whole spectrum. I mean, uh, special education, ELL, um, maybe even students of different persuasions, LGBTQ plus. How would you, what do you think about that? And how would you include and make sure they're all included?
Sure. Well, the first thing that I want to say is every single child in this district deserves the same opportunity to education. But each of their education looks different. And one of the perspectives that I bring to the board, or hopefully will bring to the board, is that perspective of wearing different hats when it comes to that. As a teacher, I taught inclusion. I had, I co-taught with a special education teacher. So I was the regular ed teacher and I worked every day hand in hand. She, we called, she was my work wife. And we worked together every single day. So to make sure that the students in our classroom, that their needs were met, whether that was a student who was legally blind and all of her documentation needed to be blown up.
The big book.
Yes, exactly. Um, to having students who were on different grade level, like reading levels. And so even though I taught 10th grade, we had to make sure that they were reading at a fourth grade reading level. So we had to find materials that, um, fit their needs there. I understand IEPs. I know how to read them. I know what it means when it's specially designed instruction and what each of them have need there. Um, on the other end, I taught AP classes. I understand the pressure of students who take AP classes. And most of them take a course load of them. They're not just taking one, they're taking all of them. And so understanding that, you know, their pressures are much different than the pressures of the special education students and need to be treated differently, but they still have that pressure. Um, I also carry the knowledge of being a parent. So I happen to be a parent of two students who have GIEPs. And so, you know, those students need to be treated differently than regular IEP students, but they have needs that need to be met. And so one of those things is I'm hoping to bring that I can look at all of those perspectives. When you talk about our LGBTQ community, the thing that is the most heartbreaking is unsupported LGBTQ students. Their attempted suicide rate is much higher than the, um, you know, when you look at the regular population. And that is something that when they feel cared for, supported and loved, that rate goes down. And so having our students recognize that there are students in our community who are different. You know, I look at our LGBT community and I just want to make sure that they know that they have somebody that will stand by them. I think that people should start looking at that community. I was born left-handed. It's just something that I was born with. I live with that. And if you kind of, like, I think people all said, oh, you're a lefty. Oh, that's cool. Well, the same, we should be looking at our LGBT. Oh, you're great. Let's go. Like, let's do what we need to do. We're here to educate. We're here to make sure that our students feel supported. And those are the things that we need to be doing. And those will be my priorities for all students.
I'm glad to hear that. I, I just want to bring up something that's always been something personally made. The word fairness. You hear that thrown around with, oh, that's not fair. Ooh, that you can't do that. That's not fair. Um, I always understood the word to mean fairness, what each individual student needed.
It's all posted with that.
That's what is fair for them.
Yeah.
And, um, I always lived that way. I always taught that way. I always feel, but people sometimes
It doesn't mean equal.
Means what's
Right. I saw a poster, fair means getting, each person gets what they need.
Yeah. Well, if you were to look at like
Same. Yeah.
Like you're much taller than I am. And so if we were to go into the kitchen and be like, hey, I need you to get something down from that shelf, you wouldn't like probably bat an eye that I go and get a step stool and I step on that step stool to get what I need. Now, you didn't need that. So you don't, you don't, it doesn't need to be equal because you don't need to step on that.
Right.
But it was fair because we were both able to get what we needed. And that's how I think we need to look.
Sometimes we lose track of that and that's, it's a shame. Yeah, it's a shame.
Right. And I used to say, like you said with the IEPs and all, like, uh, I had, as I said, the one kid was legally blind. Another kid was autistic. One girl was deaf. And I would just say to support, like, what do you need me to do? Like, you know, the kids were well, if I'm doing something or not, just let me know. And, you know, they need a little more time. I'm like, yeah, that's fine. I don't, anybody needs some. I'm like, I'll give you some more time. Um, or they need to be sat in the hallway and they need to be quiet. I'm like, yeah, no problem, man. So just, yeah, let me, I'm very flexible. I'm like, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, but not everybody's flexible. And that goes for
Yeah.
Parents.
Yeah, everybody.
Educators, school board members.
Everybody.
I always thought, yeah, being a special education teacher, I mean, being a teacher, we have to be flexible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And flexibility is, if you can't be flexible, I don't
It's a rough road.
Working with kids.
Yeah.
Well, and you know, as to in the, specifically like the classroom, no day like most days aren't going to look the way you thought they would when you woke up that morning. And you can't predict what tomorrow is going to be like in the, in, you know, the classroom. And so having that ability to kind of be moldable, amendable, flexible. You know, there were some times where I had this like lesson that I was like, yeah, this lesson's gonna be amazing. And I teach it and it falls flat. And you're like, what? And then I would talk to my students to be like, what, what was going on? And they were like, oh, we have a big math test third period and we were up all night. And you're like, oh, like this would have been, you know, something where, you know, I won't, you know, I'm sorry that you guys, like, I should have moved this to another day, you know, so that I could be more amendable because they would need that. That doesn't mean that they're not going to learn in my class that day and they're going to have like a free period. It just means I can tweak things.
Yeah. I can move in a day.
Everybody in that building, you know, to be on the same page and to be understanding and flexible and stuff like that.
It's like the day before a holiday, everybody gives a test. You're like, it's a lot of tests. Like we had four tests that day. I'm like, yeah.
Sometimes we forget. Sometimes we forget. And, um, I don't know. What do you think?
I don't know. Sounds good. Sounds like you're very
You want to close with anything?
I think you're very qualified. You got all the bases covered. Being a teacher, I have to say, I think parents, some, I mean, I would say as a complaint, but I think they really do appreciate it. I go, when they come and pick up their kids and see what's going on, they're like, whoa. Like, like, you guys really, I think they really do understand.
Why we're doing a lot of this too. I mean, some of our topics have been, uh, been educational.
Yeah.
And, you know, opening eyes to people, you know, and, um,
Yeah. And I think people saw unfortunate COVID, when they had their kids home.
We talked about the
It was like, woo.
Yeah.
You got the kids 24/7. Yeah.
That was, I think that was one of our main things to talk about.
Like parents are like, it's a lot, man. You know, and I said, you know, so I, I, I've seldom met a parent that didn't really appreciate like, like, oh, my kid really likes your class, you know, they like everything you're doing at school. Like, I think they realize we're making an effort here. We're not
And when you show up, like that, I think is 90% of the battle. You know, I would go to the prom. I would go to the different, I coached soccer, so it was always a soccer practice. I coached softball. But I would show up at, um, I remember this one story. I lived in Westchester and it was great. I lived in walking distance to the Westchester courthouse. And my students were doing mock trial. And so I was very pregnant with my daughter and I was like, I'm gonna walk over. So I waddled my way over to the courthouse and the kids just saw me in the back and they're like, what are you doing here? They were so excited that I was there. And, um, you know, those are the things that matter too, because when you show up for them, they're willing to then give that extra 10% or that extra, you know, oh, we'll just get through this, you know, it might be a hard concept to learn, but I'm gonna, you know, do that with you. Um, so I also want to say to you guys that I love that you're doing this podcast because think about how much education changed from when you started. Like, I don't, I don't mean this to be like
No Chromebooks, no phones.
Was there email?
Uh, not that much. No, you still had the stuff in the mailboxes.
And we had lots of plans that were in a, in a less
Yeah, end of it.
The green book.
Yeah. End of it. You actually had to talk to people in the office. Like, I mean, people bet there because everybody's getting their mail. Now, you know, team mail.
The water cooler.
Right, yeah. Oh, you want to go, oh.
The ability to do this with a school board candidate, which would never have happened.
Right.
Um, like, you know, you would never give the opportunity to even know who was on your school board, who, what they Unless you went to the school board meeting.
Right.
I love the fact that our school board, um, you know, talk about transparency. I love the fact that our school board meetings are live streamed. I love
That's big. Yeah, cable.
Yes. The next day, they are, uh, you could download it and watch it off the website. It just makes it so much more transparent so that people can see
Yeah, there's a TikTok page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a CB TikTok.
We have Facebook page for, uh, Armstrong, well, Armstrong, like they'll have like events, parents can ask questions. Hey, when's the soccer game? Or like, when's the field trip? And Julie, who's the judge, answers it, you know, and Marlo. So.
So listen, I want to say thank you to Amanda and Connor for being on our podcast today.
Guest number three.
Guest number
I feel very honored. Lucky number three.
Lucky.
Don't forget, uh, the last day to register is the fifth.
Let me check.
You got your PSS?